We'd like to call ma'am Porter with the Jackson County Commission Workday, December 18th, 2017. Ms. Johnson, would you do a roll call for us, please?
District one, Tim Duffy.
Present.
District two, Jason Venable.
Present.
District three, Lonnie DeDeveritt.
Present.
District four, Marcus Seuss.
Not here.
And the chairman is present.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, if we would have the indication, Mr. Porter, would you allow it, please?
I would. God our Father in heaven, we're blessed and we're humbled to be in your presence. We're thankful for the men and women that serve this county so faithfully and do such hard work. So, God, we're thankful for them, we're thankful for their families. We pray you'll be with us all during this holiday season, pray for all the folks of this county, pray that we have a good holiday season, we always remember the reason that we're here. So, God, pray you'll continue to watch over us and guide us every day, in Christ's name we pray.
Ms. Duffy, would you say that place allegiance, call it place?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing that we have tonight is the approval of the agenda. Whether any changes need to be made before proceeding, you have motion to approve the agenda represented. You have motion, you have second. You have motion and second. I'll favor say aye, all opposed say no. Now, we have a call for a public hearing on the application of the Tennessee Valley Authority to vacate a portion of County Road 96.
Mr. Chairman, we received, the county received a request from the Tennessee Valley Authority to vacate a portion of County Road 96. The description of that is attached to their request and also the resolution. It's a small portion, very short portion of that road. It matches up to what has already been vacated previously and comes off of Highway 277, I think. But anyway, in order to vacate that part of the road, Tennessee Valley Authority owns all the property on both sides of the road. It will not affect anybody's access to the road and there are no utilities in that section that would be affected. If the commission may recall, this was done previously, we vacated another portion of County Road 96 and the utilities either moved the utilities that were in that easement or they said they did not have any that needed to be moved. So, that's really all I have. Tom Brinkley is here to make an answer, any other questions, specific questions anybody has about the section road that is to be vacated. Does anybody have information here? That's all the information I have.
Ms. Campbell, you have any that you'd like to add?
As Mr. Porter leaded to half mile section, Tom Crick, if I'm wrong, 796 intersection, northeasterly at half mile, the previously vacated section there. So, it's essentially, if you use that roadway, it's what's been barricaded and closed for some time now. That's correct.
Okay, with that, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution to grant the application of the Tennessee Valley Authority to vacate that portion of County Road 96 as it is described in the application and to direct the publication and recording of such action as required by law.
Make a motion.
We have motion, we have second. We have motion and second. I'll favor say aye, all opposed say no. And, Mr. Porter, you said this would require the city to...
You don't have to do it right now.
Post, post in advance.
I need the notice to go back and once you sign it, then I'll take you to the book and publish it in the paper one time.
Okay.
So, just whenever you get those signed, I'll give them back.
Okay, thank you.
The resolution will have to be recorded in the property office and I'll take care of both of those once they get signed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next thing we have is public comment from citizens. First off, we have Mr. Bob Matthews from Section Alabama. He is here to discuss drainage issue on his property. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, chairman. I assume most of y'all know me, and I'm sorry, I don't recognize as many as I should be. Are they familiar with the ditch?
Yes.
Okay, there's two reasons. One reason, since the housing project, city did away with the lagoon system, sewer system, the ditch has become mosquito, mosquito haven. There's a lot of water down there, you can have it and the mosquitoes up there. But since it has been done away with, sewer system put in, the mosquitoes moved up there and in the dry state in the summertime, looking at that and passing around, that tile will have water in it and mosquitoes and moor frogs. You can go down there and I've never caught one, but I saw one down there, neighbor ran and killed it down there. So, that's the number one reason, my reason, for wanting this fixed and fixed right. The main reason each one of y'all should want it fixed is because during a real rainy season, and I really expected to happen this year, and I'll show you maybe, the whole main street from the red light, there's no flood all the way up there, but probably about two, from the dollar store on down towards section becomes impassable. Now, in 2012, 2009, 2009 is when you would send the trucks out there and bring the road blockade, so high water. And that went a lot, how many times that we would recall, sometime I'd have the police call, sometime I'd call myself. And here, you can see the yard. Okay, that's a, that's the yard on the corner is the pendergrass. And her steps, it'll about tear 15 feet from there, that's about all the water. Now, the whole street was covered with water. The whole street was covered and probably that day, I'm sure I got pictures of the blockades out there. And this is a picture of the other side, house over there, that's where the water come and the cemetery street run right down through here. So, that should be a concern of everybody's. And 2012, county came out, let me back up to in the 60s. In the 60s, you remember, the state did all roadwork for the older people. The county didn't really have roadwork, the state building and maintaining. Sometime in the 60s is when the law passed and the counties took over, all the roads. It would be a county road or it'd be a state road, main road, like 35 states, 72 states, but the county was maintaining the roads. So, that was in the latter part, I think, of the 60s, but in the late 60s, the state come in through some political action and at the red light, and prior to this, if you remember, you live out there, it was just a wagon road, originally a wagon road. But then, certain ones got together and they got a blacktop from where the red light is down to the Baptist church. And that was just a wide wagon road blacktop. So, in the 60s, that's when they pulled the strings and got the state come in there and make a four lane, a good three lane, out of that same street. That is the time that the state dug this ditch, there was no ditch there. The water come off the old river, just flowed out in the fields there. From my house there was concrete, so the water just flowed out in there. So, the state did this, dug this ditch from the stop sign up by right near it, put a manhole up there, few moments manhole, and it tied the, that picture where the woman's yard and the pendergrass's yard, the ground tile on the cemetery street, it tied to that street. And it worked great, but in the later years, when it started stopping up, cut everything off that street, beer cans, Coca-Cola bottles, leaves, tons of leaves every year, washed it off that street, cut down that ditch, all the way down to the housing project. Now, the housing project ditch is off seaman, so the water, if it ever gets there, it flows real good. But from the end of this tile, if you looked at it in one of the pictures, it can't, and you can clean it out every week and it's still not gonna keep this tile clean. And nobody's gonna clean it every week, so that's what we did there. That's a picture of it, you type them around. That's the end of the tile.
You'll notice on the pictures that it's, the end of the tile is on private property.
You'll notice how deep the water's standing, your hands raining, all these pictures been made of it. So, that tile is filling up. I guarantee you, if you go out there inside and stick your stick or something, right at the end of the tile, it'll be six inches, maybe eight inches of mud, which is already washed off the street up here and got to there. And this picture here is the same as those, except it shows you from the tile to the main street up there. This picture shows you from the same figure as that, all the way up to the further manhole there. Now, in 2012, they come in here and saw, and I offered to give them an easement, start with, 'cause I was begging them to get that road cleared out. Had offered to give them an easement. Well, actually, thought the lawyer, thinks that's better than what he's doing, what they do, something they give. Tell them, say, oh, they're gonna cause other people water there, done it too. Ain't nobody else been there draining, made by the county, our state, across the property line number. So, when this here completely starts blocking the main street, I just don't feel comfortable giving you an easement. Our saying, oh, just dig it up again. I mean, I wish that we could get it done, and that right now, if you want it eased up, I'll give you an easement, if you'll do it and do it right. It's about 150 feet from here, like up through the stop sign, I'm not sure of that, but gotta focus on 150. So, when this main street, when this here stopped that water go down, this main street will be completely blocked. So, I'm just asking you to get rid of mosquito haven for the people, 'cause these are the housing projects there. I mean, believe it, back in summer, you couldn't get out there without being able, little kids, I mean, anybody, the mosquitoes would eat it up. I know when Matthew come out, he was in shorts one day, I said, you're crazy, you can't hang around out here in shorts. My back dicked, I mean, I can't sit out there. I mean, I've got every time mosquito convention, it's off. But to get rid of mosquito haven and to keep the road from being blocked again, and it's gonna happen, it may not happen anywhere, but when I look at that tile, I got it yesterday looking at it, I said, it's almost high built in there now. There's not water, there's just dirt with water on top of it, because the ditch is so stocked up down through there, it won't run out. Any questions?
Mr. Matthews, I walked in late right there. I've got some places just like this over Park Rock Valley. Is this on your property?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, I've got three different peoples called here in the last few weeks, 'cause, you know, we're in a lowland area over there and the beavers got it backed up.
How well I know?
You know, one guy, he's, he lives in hospital, he don't want to come in right there, and I said, well, only thing you can do is turn that beaver dam out, 'cause we far and we ought to tear him out frequently.
Yeah.
And this is on 65 highway, I mean, it's fixing to come across the road under Preston and places.
Okay.
You know, and I told him, I said, you know, only thing I'll tell you to do is go out there and get you a shovel and start and tear that things out.
Oh, the beaver?
Yeah, I mean, that's like it right there. I mean, I'm not gonna speak to the rest of them, but, you know, if it's on private property, you know...
Well, what can you tell me to do?
I guess you'd have to clean that ditch out, is what I've had to do on my side.
You mean, the road blocks up there, I'd be putting gills or not clean the ditch out?
I'm not gonna say be putting, but I'm talking about your mosquito infestation, you know.
Oh, let me deal with that, if you help me.
You know, I've had to clean this place out twice this past year, 'cause we've had so many drains and things, you know. I mean, I've done it myself, 'cause I know what it is, these beavers just back it up. Well, it does, it fills it up. But these two other people there, I told them the same thing, I said, tear it out.
Well, I can understand what you're saying about beavers, but you can't control beavers no more than I control weeds and the beer cans, the Coca-Cola cans, even, even the young milk cans, permanent thing will walk down there.
I know a lot of major patients you get right there, that's holding a lot of water back, just like that storm up out there.
Well, in fact, it's holding all the water back in there right there.
It catches all of that.
If this was cleaned out, this water, tile would be empty.
Have you talked to the city of section at all about cleaning it out? Cities, municipalities can go on private property.
I speak that now, so I spent, boy, 18 years as a mayor. And believe, this would've been nothing years ago when I was mayor, if it had been legal for the town to do, 'cause it's a county problem, city's got no, no authority in it. So, I mean, I may be wrong, but to my knowledge, no, the city could not. Now, the city, I understand from Matthew's, when he was there, he met with the mayor and the mayor agreed to give money, yeah, because everybody was like, hey, but now how much money, of what? So, that's where we stand, but it's been talked about in the city council meetings for, God, how many years? But never, no way did the lawyer ever give me any, personally, I knew that anybody would, would do it because it falls back into county hands. And like I said, the lawyer, I understand, had said it was legal to do it, but if he opened up a can of worms for everybody else and paint all that everywhere else, it's got drain problem, so. But it was, my opinion, it would be better to do it and do it right and get it over with, because the water could completely run off. Now, it's packing up right here in the tile, and if it was done right, the water would run all out and they'd do that for a few years.
At your property?
Yeah.
The way I understand laws, we can't go on private property at all, all we can do is...
I wanted to give you an easement, I said, I'll give you an easement.
So, I don't know if us doing that before...
I don't know if us ever doing that, taking an easement, somebody cleaning up a ditch on their own property, I just don't know if us ever doing that. Two issues, one is on private property, two is in the city section, the town section, so. I don't know what lawyer it was that said sometime ago that it was legal, but this lawyer would say it's not, 'cause it's on private property.
What distance is that span? How long, how long a distance is it?
How long?
How long a distance is that ditch right there?
Roughly 150 foot from here to the street. That's a good 150 from the street.
Yeah. He's talking about from here, it needs to be cleaned out.
Oh, 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 well, that's a good, don't see that? I know Matthew's...
I didn't tip at all, but it's probably, it's farther than the 150.
Yeah, it's, it's a little farther than what's already there, but I don't, I've never measured, because it's during, well, when you get there walking, but I know one time Matthew's come out there and measured it.
I measured 375.
Okay.
Three seventy-five's what I measured, Mr. Matthews.
From, from the street or from the end of the tile?
End of the pipe to where you and I looked at the end of it.
And where the concrete is behind the house property, yes, that part?
375. You were looking at that picture, y'all measured it together?
Yes, sir.
Any question I can ask, answer? You'd be doing away with mosquito haven, you'd be doing away with a road problem, it's gonna be there. And I think everyone would just leave, that it's gonna be there, 'cause you come out and blockades or stuff, things, and live with it. There's nothing else I can answer or say, I'll get out of your way.
Well, I appreciate you coming out and we will, we will discuss this more, but it's looking like private property issue and I don't see a solution right now, but we will, we will discuss it farther.
Okay. Look, we're...
Thank you, I appreciate it. Next we have on a public comment from citizen is Carol Wasselo.
Yeah, what I've got, 1390 County Road 531, I bought a place down there, spring of 2013, and shortly after buying it, I noticed one of my ditches wasn't flowing right and took shovel, there was debris that was in the tile that went through the road. Never had an issue with it after that until the Christmas floods. In 2015, my neighbor came over and said he was going partially diverted, it's flooding his dog pen or something down by his house. I had no problem with it partially diverted, 'cause everybody was flooding. Come back next day, it's completely blocked 100 percent. Since that time, been dealing with Matthew Hodges and Mr. Campbell there, was supposed to come out and fix the ditches, got it backwards flowing right and everything, but never have came back and finished. I'm trying to just find some help, figure out when it's gonna get finished and solve the problem with the erosion that is going on, 'cause the tile is completely stocked up now, which was stocked up by the county this time.
And what, when did they do that?
Do what?
When did they block it, the county?
You'll have to ask the engineer that for sure.
It was shortly after the phone call that went out, after the December floods, it was sometime after the end of December of 15.
Have you had flooding issues after?
Now, I do, every time we get a decent rain, it floods my driveway out. I have video footage of it on my phone.
I come out, look at it real, what I had seen was, you know, how the water comes down, it deadheads right there.
Yeah, because that tile stocked up.
Well, if you got plenty of ditch in the front, it's just my opinion, you know, in the front, it's deep enough and it looks to me like it'd carry every bit of the water if it was curved a little more, to where that water ain't coming straight down, it's just hitting the deadhead on the road. To me, that's, that's a simple fix.
You tell me if that's a simple fix. You say when it gets down to the road.
And when was this rain? When was this rain?
That, that was at the Christmas floods, when it was unstocked.
Well, it's hard to compare anything...
Right, exactly. But then, that's the whole reason it's stocked up now. The whole reason it's stocked up now is 'cause of the Christmas flood. If it wasn't, if it wasn't stocked up now, we wouldn't be getting all the water on our side washing my driveway.
What I was gonna say, you can't compare about any rain we get to the Christmas flood, it's a year event.
Exactly, but that was what, it was based on to stop it back up.
Right.
That, that was the only thing that's the reason to stop it up, no other rain has ever been in the way.
You don't have no problem, I guess, even with it.
When it rains, when it rains, if we get an inch of rain, my driveway floods out down there.
That's the bottom, yeah. That's where I'm talking about, if you make, if you can...
Well, I was, I'm open for suggestions, he's been out there several times, Matthew Hodges has.
But since the tile has been closed, it now floods on County Road 737, because all the water is running from our house, like you're saying, it should, that ditch should be able to carry it all the way around. It doesn't, 'cause then you start flooding at 737.
How far is that, would you say?
Yeah, at least. As soon as you turn off O'Larkin's full road on 737. And I work in hunt school, so when I come in, I have to figure out the best way, 'cause you guys know when it floods on O'Larkin's full road, you can't go through the swamp. And I've been where I can't come home on 737, because it's, the water shows the road.
So, you and I, your driveway, Charlie Lamb?
Right.
I don't recall the exact size, it's in the 24-36 range. We built a cap and installed over the inlet side of the pipe and when we received the call, we were mindful, like you guys are talking about, that the December floods is basically anomaly, but whenever we receive complaints about flooding issues, then what we try to do is take the stance of, if everything was kind of, you know, at equilibrium we're working before, then what has changed? So, we went out to decide the factors on what had changed, where, it was, Mr. Wasselo showed me where they had changed some terrain pictures to make the water, divert the water from the house, and it came to a ditch between him and his neighbor and then came to the roadside ditch through that. So, in that, in that, doing that work is when the pipe was cleaned out, is how I understood...
The ditch was already there when I bought the house. All I did was go down there and clean it out at the end.
Okay.
Now, behind my house, where my patio is, yeah, I sloped the bank to keep the water, 'cause even during the Christmas floods, water was all the way up in my house. There was nothing I could do about it, nobody's fault. But it backing up down at the road and flooding across the road, whatever, that, that's not, I didn't cause that. But now that this has all come out, the culvert's stocked up and I'm getting all the water. I mean, you were there, you know, you seen it, you seen the rain, if that tile's halfway unstocked, it's not gonna flood the other side of the road, especially now that there was culverts put in of the proper size on the other side of the road.
Yeah, well, in determining what had been done on the side to change things, that was our determination, the terrain had changed and changed the flow of water to that ditch between Wasselo and his neighbor. And then where it met the roadside ditch, this pipe that had been clogged for some time, according to Mr. Campbell, years and years and years, this pipe had been clogged. And looking at the roadside ditch, there's a large capacity ditch on one side versus no ditch on the other. So, it was our determination that if that pipe was opened up, that it would cause flooding on the downstream side of that, and the ditch had been carrying the water for however long that pipe had been stocked up. So, the water, as it's designed, as that roadway's designed, it goes down into the curve and then crosses into the swamp, basically, that comes from 220. So, it's the tributary area that feeds Roseberry Creek.
There's four culverts in that road, from the curve past my house to the curve he's talking about, and two of them stocked up right now. Two of them are stocked up. The water was intended to flow from the ridge down across the road into what is called Hammond Bar, initially, when that was a charred road. I know the guy that built the first house on the road and he told me that tile was put there, because that's where the water was draining there, by the county. You know, I'm not saying open it up and flood my neighbor, I'm saying open it up halfway and let parts of the water go each direction, then maybe my yard will be flooded now, that's what I'm saying.
Because where you guys are talking about flooding it sharper, there's underground cables there, and you can't...
Telephone cables.
Well, that's what we thought, we thought they had been moved for it.
No, I had my water leader move where they could do something with the ditch, nobody's ever come back and done it.
737 is huge, it's a flood plain, so what they're talking about.
Did you get it moved?
Yes.
I think that's what I...
Yeah, 'cause it was a road in the water meter. So, when they run the water line, they move everybody's even hairs, too.
So, the water had dumped it on his meter.
And I've been here since 1994.
And I'll be, the previous, Mr. Gross that built the regional house there, along with the neighbors that bought that house, will tell you that that culvert was...
The culvert was open.
Had been open. And the county had came out five years ago, six years ago, and cleaned out all the tiles downstairs there, because they were having flooding issues back then.
I mean, we never had a problem up until the Christmas flood, and I'd been there two, over two years, and there never was a problem, but then we have a Christmas flood and my neighbor complains, which I'm sorry, I'm sorry if whatever got flooded on his house, but on a normal rain, it don't flood him, it don't flood us.
There's no ditch on my side of the road.
That's because they put you down.
Every bit of it into my yard, into my house, into my pool. I've been there since 1994, never had a flood at all. You let unstopped that ditch, it puts every single bit of that water on my house that deep.
No. I got, in the video, you can see your yard's not flooded at Christmas.
I'm not gonna argue.
Okay, but we, we bought a house that's not in the flood zone, so therefore, we should not have to be dealing with flood issues, because the person across the street is in a flood zone.
I'm not in flood zone.
I mean, it's...
I have 50 acres, and...
Okay, it's not our, basically, it's not our problem. It's not our, basically, it's not our problem. We should not have been lost.
Any way that you see that would benefit both of them. Now, I know you pull this ditch in right there, you put that rock in, that was the whole purpose, to take care of it.
Yeah, that, the purpose of that was to prevent the erosion, have the water mitigate around that turn and check in. Because it, it has to make a turn, you know, and, and I have no doubt that that, that drainage structure was put in place because that's where the water pours off the mountain. And they're getting a lot of water. And what they did, in my opinion, they had to do that to keep it out of their house. But it's past them at that stage. So, if that pipe's open, my opinion, he's gonna have a serious issue.
You think Mr. Campbell is gonna have a serious issue?
Mr. Campbell's gonna have a serious issue.
If he opens up one or both.
Driving down, there's no ditch on my side of the road.
There's a little swells that deep. So, when it comes through that pipe, it's right at the head, so it either goes left or right, and it's, it's.
Can I ask something?
Way, way, way.
Since it's my turn, it's fair. Mr. Campbell, you had six-inch PVC tiles in your driveways. Because there's no ditch on my side. Because you had to dig it out. I only put them there just to catch the water off the road. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I put tiles in underneath my driveways when I built the house in ninety-four, because they came in and paved the road three or four years later. When they paved the road, I caught the wa, the surface water running off the road onto my, onto my property. So we dug a little swell and we put little tiles in, then we paved our driveway.
Okay, on this, on this public, uh, comment from citizens, let's, let you folks say your, your pace. And then if Mr. Campbell wants to say something, he, he's welcome to.
And address your questions to him and then we'll. Okay, so when Matthew and Mr. Campbell came out the last time, the discussion was Matthew was going to open it halfway, the tile, the culvert halfway. So we could see what the results would be if it was open halfway. That was a compromise between the two. And then that's when everything kind of fell to the wayside, we never heard any more.
Yeah, when Matthew left, nobody come contacted us anymore or anything. They were supposed to come out and fix the ditches where they just threw riprap around in it. And, and didn't really do anything, just dumped some in it and lit. And it's still eroding, eroding now.
And what's eroding in your driveway?
Yeah.
Well, if that's everything, I, I'd like to address Mr. Campbell and engineer all in to us. Just to clarify to the, uh, commission, uh, as it is right now, you're saying if any of these two culverts open up, it's gonna flood, uh, the neighbor, Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, you know, our determination from looking at the site was it needed to be capped permanently. Because if that water flows under the road and a sizable rainfall is in, I don't have any doubt, but it's gonna, it's gonna affect the downstream property and that's Mr. Campbell.
When you're talking about flooding, Mr. Campbell, when you're talking about flooding his house, his property.
His structures. Yes, yes, sir.
Now, I'd like to ask one more question from you folks. When you say it floods your driveway, uh, how much flood are we talking about? We're talking about four inches over?
I'm talking washes the gravel out of it and you have to put more gravel in it every time you turn around. And I haven't touched it because I always thought it was gonna be fixed. So it needs gravel in it right now.
Does it have standing water?
Yeah, it'll have standing water down holes where it washes the gravel.
Over, how big an area does it have standing water?
In, in my yard, in my yard, actually, it stands about, uh, twenty foot up into the yard. And then it, it'd go down, it takes a while, it'd go down. But, you know, the whole, whole issue was promises were made, they were gonna come out and fix stuff. And then everything just falls to the wayside.
But the only damage you're suffering is the erosion?
It is my driveway.
Okay.
Grabbing your grub.
No, no.
Mr. Campbell, you have anything else you'd like to add to this?
Sir, I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have. If you wanted to gauge for the erosion, um, those pictures you have there were when the work was done. So, you could compare those to present day condition, uh, if you guys hadn't done anything. Being mindful that, uh, in one of the pictures there on the after, you can see some water meters that were in the yard, the Waslow's, there was a water project that came through. And relocated those water meters and then added some riprap. But the time I was out there, I didn't see any significant difference from the month of this. What it looked like when we installed it, uh, now.
This is worse.
This is worse, dead end, huh?
Yeah.
And to my knowledge, uh, Mr. Campbell hasn't been flooded since, have you had any flooding issues since?
That's the only time we've ever had any water come anywhere near our house since nineteen ninety-four. Except when that, when that ditch had been opened up. It's been not just clogged up, it was stopped, it was completely, there's never been any water out of that thing up until the time they ended. Ever.
Did you have any flooding in Christmas?
We haven't had any flood at all.
On that Christmas, two thousand?
Oh, yeah, I had, I was out there with concrete bags and rock and stopping it up because my hole, I had that much water under my house.
Right.
There's just no, there's no ditches on my side of the road. So even if, even if we dug a five-foot ditch from the culvert, if you wanna dig a ditch thousand, twelve, hundred, fifteen, hundred feet across from my property and you take it all off, that's fine. But then you're gonna dump it on the next property, because there's no, we're shitting, we're about twelve inches lower than the road. And the next property is probably three foot lower than the road. So everything's moving that way. And there's no ditches on our side, the other side's got a big five-foot ditch. As far as biking up seven thirty-seven, that's coming from the hospital. That used to flood in that barn right there, it used to be in the second, up in the loft of that barn when it used to flood. But when they went and cleaned out all Beaver Dance behind the hospital, they really haven't flooded back there since then. But it gets across the road every once, well, that's coming off our swamp property there, off the mountain where there is no ditch again. And it runs across and goes down into the swamp. And I, I mean, I, I understand, I know the people that lived the house before them had problems, had problems with the drains across the back of that. Dump all that water on me, well, there's nowhere for it to go. Not, not when I've been there, I was a second house out there and been there for twenty-three years. There's a five-foot ditch on that side of the road, more than capable of handling that water. That water is never, ever even come close to coming out of that ditch.
To the seven thirty-seven issue, um, that map is in front of Mr. Vannable. You'll see the flood flowing as it relates to Roseberry Creek, the tributary area, to Roseberry Creek. And that intersection, it was, um, subjug intersection on seven thirty-seven to Lockinville Road, it's actually in a flood plain, so sizable rainfall is in.
Where the culverts are smashed in, it hadn't been repaired with a eighteen-wheeler runoff on them.
You could expect flooding in that area, it's actually in the flood plain.
You said there's a five-foot ditch on the side of the road?
Yeah, they got thirty-six-inch coves under those driveways on that side of the road. But now where, but where do they start? They're at the, they're at the head. So I mean, it's, you know, they're, they're, the ditch in front of their house on that side of the driveway, it's not very big, but it's a whole lot different than what's on our side of the road. Once you cross over the driveway, you got ditches this deep. Uh, can you ask him something for me, since I'm addressing you? Uh, did he flood from two thousand thirteen spring up until the Christmas floods? Was there any flooding damage with all the rains that had?
From thirteen till when?
Till fifteen, Christmas of fifteen. We had, we had water coming over the driveway on three different occasions, didn't know where it's coming from. And then when the Christmas came and it was so deep, I went out there trying to find out where the water's coming from and found that ditch open, found that five-foot.
So you think the flooding, uh, stopped the pot?
No, they don't stop the pot. All it had in it was dirt and limbs and leaves. But my, I mean, I'm not, even, what I'm saying to you is even if, even if I wasn't getting flooded by that pot, there is nowhere for that water to go except to our house. Is there not a drainage, uh, uh, ditch in your house? Thirty-six-inch culvert coming through there. If it's flooding your driveway, you gonna hit my flood meter?
But now, you asked him the question, did his house flood on Christmas twenty fifteen? Our house, even though we're setting up on the ridge, our house flooded, just the same as his did on the Christmas flood of twenty fifteen, so that's not even a gauge to this whole situation.
Twenty fifteen's not a gauge.
Right, it's not a gauge.
You had people off San Mountain who's housing for us.
Exactly, exactly. But we know it was an issue with the water when we purchased the house because the house had mold under the house when we purchased it from the fact that the back was not draining as it should be.
If there was some way for water to go on my side, I would just have. There's just nowhere to go. I mean, there's just nowhere to go. Dump it in my house and you go out and dump it in my house.
When it comes over on, on your side, it, it basically is a standing pole until it, eventually it goes away.
No, when it runs, we, we, like I said, we're about this much lower than the road, so we have a small swale there to catch surface water. So what happens when that pipe sees so much water, there's just no way it can handle it. It just runs right down the driveway.
Comes out, big fire.
And it just runs straight down the driveway, straight to our house. I've got a big thirty-six-inch drain that catches the water before it gets to our house. It goes on, runs underneath our, one of our detached garages, and it couldn't, it can't even handle it. But I mean, even if it could, you still got nowhere for that water to go, you're, you're running into a problem. The next person that builds a house on down, they're gonna be dumping all that water on them. And we dug a pond just to collect the surface water so it wouldn't dump on the next person so we could channel it around. But there's just, like I said, you're that much lower than the road once you get down to that, past my house.
Is there any other discussion amongst the commissioners concerning this issue with either party? Well, I think, I think at this time we'll take this into advisement still. It, it appears that, uh, according to, uh, Mr. Campbell, engineer, that, uh, this is the best possible procedure is being taken place right now as it is. Is any other, uh, commissioner would like to go and look at the site or, and go farther with it?
I'd like to allocate some, some money first year.
Absolutely.
Just to check it out. Not questioning anything, I've been sitting here, man, I just hope to see it also.
There's a, there's a big creek on the backside of our property. And if there was a way to go from that culvert between my property and the neighbor's property to get that water down to that creek without bringing it across either one of us, I would be happy to let you guys do it. But that's a long way. I mean, it's probably five, six hundred feet from the road down to that creek. That's, that's the only solution without flooding me or my neighbor. That's the only way you're gonna get the water off, um, without, if you're gonna bring it across the road. And there's, there's just no other, other alternative.
Okay, at this time we will, uh, move forward and, uh, Mr. CSK and engineers will come down and look at the situation. And, uh, we'll just, I, I would say just go for mine.
So we're gonna rock this down for another two years?
No, I'd like, I'd like to say, see, I'm not gonna say any problem be solved, but I, I have not seen the issue of what's going on, and I'd like to go up, actually, first year sometime come down.
Okay, well, we, we've waited two years now.
I, I was told that, told that they were gonna come out and fix our ditches. Whether, whether it stays stocked up or not, I was told it was gonna come out and be fixed.
How was you told that it would be fixed?
Finish the riprap job, whatever, where I could take, maintain it, because you can't do nothing but spray it now. The way it's riprap, grass is gonna grow and I gotta spray it. So that's gonna cause erosion. But if I don't spray it, then I'm gonna have weeds this tall and briar to grow up in my yard again. So what am I supposed to do? By round up and keep it killed out?
What is your suggestion on how that part should be fixed? You say dirt should go over it.
Initially, my suggestion was when we found out the water line was being put in on the other side, was to ditch it out all the way down and put the proper sized tile on the other side of the road. Then you wouldn't have as much flooding out of the banks of a ditch that wasn't there. But that was unheard of, so the water line was put in, then they come back and replace tiles in his driveway. Nothing's ever been done now. I've got parts that's got rock, I've got parts that don't have rock. So if I keep spraying it, it's gonna keep the grass killed out, there's gonna even, eventually be erosion down through there. I was told it would be fixed. That's why I'm here today.
Told you it would be fixed, how?
That was supposed to be Matthew Hodges and Mr. Campbell here was supposed to come back out and give us an answer on it. If Matthew left, you never came back to my house. That was the last time you and Matthew stood in my yard and told me that.
What conversation y'all discussed about what would be done, I do not know about.
You were standing.
You were standing right there.
We were talking amongst the four of us.
There was a lot of ideas discussed, like opening the pipe halfway, I know that was mentioned as a possibility.
That's okay.
Along the other.
I, I know what your stance is on it.
Yeah.
So if you'll come out first year, we'll be happy to make.
I'm gonna meet you there and show you.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate your time.
Please, sir.